Even if that asks.
Evening, everybody. I'd like to bring the meeting to order if we'd stand for the pledge. Okay, Adrian, a real call, please.
Tanya Davis.
Here.
Ryan Rummel.
Yes.
Libby Wyatt.
Here.
For instance.
Here.
Vanessa Battaglia. She's absent.
We have a quorum. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Should I approve tonight's agenda?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Then we need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February third.
Should I approve meeting minutes from February third, two thousand twenty five?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So next up, we have some new town staff members that we'd like to introduce tonight. Joe, you want to do that?
Yeah, Jonda, would you like to come up and introduce yourself, please? I guess I should talk into the mic.
Yes, please.
And a song and a dance.
I just came from the city of Anderson and hoping to bring some good things here to the town of Fortville.
Good.
It's nice to be here. I feel very welcomed here already. Thank you very much.
Good. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're good to have you.
Welcome to Fortville.
Dominic, you're up.
Hi, my name is Dominic Bova. I'm going to be working in the street utilities department, and I would just like to thank you guys for this opportunity.
Thanks. Glad to have you.
Line, line break.
Hi, my name's Line Break. I'm working for the street and utilities department. Just thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
I will add to this line. Dominic has been working with us for a few weeks now. They're both doing a really good job.
Awesome.
Good to hear. Glad to have him on board.
Got to have fun in the snow, didn't you?
Yeah.
And we're gonna have to scratch KJ. He had a class he had to go to tonight. They only offer once every six months, so he got sent to class instead of the council meeting this evening. I apologize.
Okay, get team late. It's time. Yeah. Okay, next up, we have the annual financial report with Beth on Zoom.
Hello, everyone. So you've got, you've got in front of you your annual financial report, which is basically the summary of everything related to finances for two thousand twenty four that after it's approved goes onto Gateway. Just to go over it on pages two through four, that is the fund report, which basically shows every single fund that the town has and beginning balances, the receipts that we brought in for every fund, all of the dispersments, and then the ending cash for every single fund. And then overall, our overall cash for all funds is twenty-two million, nine hundred thirty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-eight and twenty-five dollars. And then when you go pages through five through twelve, that breaks down the receipts into each fund in a little more detail. So it'll show you where we received the funds, whereas if it's the property taxes, your lit dollars, any utilities and those type of things, it gives you a summary in each fund of where all the revenue comes from. And then when you go through pages thirteen through twenty-three, it does the same thing for dispersments. So again, it always breaks it down into the categories of your personal services, which is your payroll supply, you know, payroll and benefits, then supplies and service and charges, which are your professional services, insurance, utilities, and things like that. And then your capital outlays, which obviously is like your buildings, furniture, fixtures, and things of those nature. And it gives you again by every single fund in all the detail of those. And then pages twenty-four through twenty-six is a listing of your funds. And again, it's just literally a listing of those funds, which is the same ones that are also in the on your first pages that you receive, but it's just an actual listing of them. And then you go to your next page, which is the debt schedule, which is basically a summary of your debt, showing the beginning, ending balances, and the principal that we paid in twenty-five for your debt, showing that we have thirteen million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents in debt. Then we go to the next page, which is your deficit fund balance. Generally, you don't like those to be negative, but the reason we have negative funds is because we have reimbursable grants. And so basically, we have to spend the money before we get the money. So we have the end dot special distribution. We have nine thousand eighty-one dollars and forty-six. Now, we do have a promotional fund, which I believe is like the flower fund, and it's just getting reimbursed. It's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy cents. And then Operation Pullover, which is for police, which is eleven hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. But with those, you'll see that balance. It's in the total with the balance on your accounts receivable, which will be in just a few pages. So we recognize that we're going to be receiving that money in. And then the next pages are your leases, which we have a Bobcat lease. And then we also have the redevelopment authority with the township improvements. We have that. And then on page twenty or page thirty, you have your transfers, which are your transfers between the funds. So for instance, like when we have to move our pilot money into the general and things like that, all those keep track of the transfers. And that's a continuation on thirty-one and thirty-two. And then on page thirty-three, we have a listing of our grants that we have, which we have to list out of any grants that we are working on currently in two thousand twenty-four. And so we have the Mount Vernon Trail Phase Two and Phase One. And basically, it just shows the monies that we received in and dispersed out for those funds. And then you go to page thirty-four, which is our capital assets, which lists all of our different assets that we have as far as our land, our buildings, infrastructure, material machinery into those. And then offsetting a few years ago, we had to start doing depreciation. So then on page thirty-five, you have the depreciation, which is basically, if you have an asset that has different, they have different life values. So like a vehicle, a regular vehicle has like five year life, so you take twenty percent of that value and depreciate it each year. And it varies based on the type of asset. And then on page thirty-seven, which I was talking about, the accounts receivable and accounts payable. So accounts payables, any encumbered funds, and we didn't have any funds that we needed to carry over. So we paid everything out that we wanted to pay in the twenty-four budget, and we're starting fresh on twenty-five with our expenses. But on accounts receivable, we did have, in general activities, we had seventeen thousand, seven forty-one and ninety-six cents. Stormwater, eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Wastewater, forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And then in our water utilities, we had twenty-eight hundred, seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. So we have to now list our utility, outstanding balances in our utilities. So we have that. And then, as I mentioned, on those grants, we had to mention the grants that we're still going to be receiving the funds for the reimbursable grants. And then the last page is the retirement funds that we participate in, the town participates in, which are Perth and Perth seventy-seven. And Perth seventy-seven is for the firefighters and the police. So that's a special fund for them, and then the Perth is for the just public employee retirement fund. And that is an overview of everything. I don't know if anyone had a chance to look at or had any specific questions.
I have a question.
Yep.
I saw in here the interest, the little bit of interest. Well, it wasn't a little bit. It was a lot that we got on the Trust Indiana when we put the money in there for the short term. And I know that Missing and I had a conversation about that, and we left the interest there. So how does that money need to be accounted in? What can we use it for?
Well, you can use it for each one of those categories that it was for. So if it's the general, it can be used. I mean, it's general money that you can use. I mean, so it can be spent out of there to be, since it's in that fund. In order to really spend it, we have to transfer it back in, so I don't know how long you wanted to keep that there, but that's really, it's, you don't write checks out of Trust Indiana.
Right, right. I just want to know, I guess it's probably best just to leave it there until we find out we need it, and then we can move it.
Exactly. No, there's nothing wrong with keeping it there.
Just earning money, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thanks, Beth.
Okay, so it has to be, it has to be approved. And then I have one more thing with the transfers after you approve that.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve it then.
Uh huh.
I make a motion to approve the annual financial report for two thousand twenty-four.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, and there's a page right after the AFR that you received, and it says miscellaneous appropriation transaction list. And what this is, is a list of transfers that I had to make between funds. So you can make transfers within a group. So like I was talking about those groups, one, two, three, and four. And if there's something short on one budget line, you can move it to another. We had to make a couple transfers between a group into another group. So on the, the first one is six thousand dollars, which we had some additional, police went over a little bit on their professional services. They had, basically, it really boiled down to car and maintenance is what really caused it to go over, and that's unpredicted. So we just transferred that out. So we had six thousand dollars there. And then on MVH, we had a little bit of overage, and that basically was there was, they had an extra certification that they added last year, which caused it to be over, which was approved, but it was approved after the budget. And, and that was seven thousand dollars. And then there was a little bit on the park, which was four thousand, and basically, the health insurance was a little bit higher, so we had to move that over. So overall, it was just seventeen thousand dollars, but I just need an approval to approve those transfers.
The transfer. I'll make a motion the the first the
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Beth. Okay, next up, we have Chief Elder with Vernon Township Fire Department.
Good evening. Mark Elder with the Vernon Township Fire Department here to present information from our activity, primarily from two thousand twenty-four, but we'll cover some years prior to that and show how we got to where we are today. Also, Trustee may ask me to extend her apologies. She has come down with the bug that's going around, and she is home trying to recuperate. So she will reach out to all of you at a later time to discuss the township activity. I believe you all have, hopefully you have the slide presentation in front of you, and we'll just go through each one. And along the way, usually if you have any questions, please just stop, and I can answer them at that time. Going into the second slide, I'm very proud to announce, and we have announced that to the public, that we did improve our ISO rating for starting this in April of this year. We were at a five, and we have improved it to a three. If you're not familiar with the ISO schedule and how it works, it's on a scale from one to ten, one being the best, ten being the least amount of protection. So in this case, the lower the score that we can get, the better. And there's three primarily, primary categories that ISO looks at. And that's our communication system, or the county nine-on-one, the water purveyor, so Citizens Energy for McCordville and the town itself, for the town of Fortville, and then the fire department. And there's six categories under the fire department they look at, and I'm going to go through those slides. If you go to the next slide, we look at our personnel. We ended year two thousand twenty-four with twenty-seven people on shift, six people in administration, five reserve firefighters, and eighteen fire corps members. And I've explained in the past that the fire corps are a category of reserve members who don't do operational. They don't fight fires. They don't go on EMS calls, but they're there to provide rehab support on the scene of a large incident with snacks, drinks, pop-up tents with heaters, or misters to cool us down in the summer. Our career personnel history, next slide. Going back to two thousand nineteen, the first career administrator was hired, and that was our EMS chief Kylie Colberson, who got the EMS program up and running. We skipped a year of hiring anybody career-wise, and then in two thousand twenty-one is where we had our first big hire, where we had nine people on shift. That is over three shifts, so that was three people per shift, and then we still had about a hundred plus part-time and paid-for-run people to try to staff the apparatus. Going through the years, we got to where we have now six in the office providing administrative support. Twenty-seven people on shift, over three shifts, or nine per shift, over two state, separated out over two stations, for a total of thirty-three career personnel in the department. That number does not include our reserves and our fire. The next area that ISO grades us on is our training. And the categories shown on that slide are the categories that ISO looks at. So they, there's so many hours of training that a person that drives the trucks has to have. The officers have to have additional training. Then there's training for working together as a company. Hazardous materials. EMS is not a category in ISO. It's just a category we've thrown in there since that is a large portion of what we do. And then facilities training, which is training at a training site. We obviously don't have that, but we have worked out a, an agreement with the city of Greenfield. And we do go down there two or three times per year and use their burn chambers and actually put our personnel into live-fire environments for training purposes. And then our fire prevention and investigation personnel have to have training hours as well. Now, over the last three years, I'm proud to say that we've increased our hours substantially from in two thousand twenty-two to just under seventy-four hundred hours to nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-three hours finishing two thousand twenty-four. The community risk reduction component of the ISO rating is basically our fire prevention and fire investigation. We really started our fire prevention program in two thousand twenty-two with the hiring in the fall of two thousand twenty-one of our fire marshal. The first couple of years, the inspection numbers were lower than what they are in two thousand twenty-four, but they were still good. If you figure those, the first time a lot of the businesses, both in Fortville and McCordville, had been inspected by fire prevention personnel. And so we went from a hundred and fifty-four inspections in two thousand twenty-two to five hundred and fifty-one, two thousand twenty-four. My belief behind that is we're going around on the second and third round of inspections now, so a lot of the major code problems that were discovered have been corrected. We also had a gentleman that came in who retired from code enforcement, wants something to do. He helps us out performing some of the smaller inspections. So that helped generate more inspections last year. We had seventy-nine plan reviews in two thousand twenty-four on commercial projects. We had thirty-seven public relations events. It was up just a little bit from two thousand twenty-three, but if you compare it to two thousand twenty-two, it's increased almost double. I mean, I think as we get our name out, that we're not the Fortville Volunteer Fire Department, we're not the McCordville Volunteer Fire Department, we're the Vernon Township Fire Department. People are now recognizing who to contact when they have an event in the community to come out and do a speech or provide some type of service to them. And then fire investigations, we're holding steady, which is not a bad thing. These are the ones that are trained personnel at a higher level to do complex fire investigations handle. So hopefully, we keep those numbers low. On the next slide, this is our incident responses. The first category is two thousand twenty-four. We finished the year with one thousand eight hundred and seven calls for service. The majority of those are EMS. Just to go back to two thousand twenty, when we have data back to, we, we did thirteen hundred, just over thirteen hundred runs that year. And in five years, we've got to where we're doing over eighteen hundred. Something to really look at. Two thousand twenty-one, we did one thousand six hundred and forty-five calls. That was the last year that we covered green township of Madison County. So in two thousand twenty-two, starting that year, we did not cover that, but we still increased by twenty runs. So I don't know what it would have been like had we continued to cover that area, because it's growing substantially. The next slide is just a breakdown, showing the majority again of our calls are EMS-related, just under seventy percent. I did include a slide this year to kind of break down what type of EMS calls were going on. This by far is not all the chief complaints that we respond to, but it's the top ten or eleven. The biggest calls for service that we have are chief complaint is, is injured person. And then the next one is no complaint or illness, or a SOR is a signature release. And what happens there is we'll get called out to an incident, maybe by a family member or a bystander, because they thought somebody was having a medical issue, or somebody was hurt, and we get there, and they're like, there's nothing wrong with me, or they just pulled off the side of the road to rest, and they weren't passed out. They were just resting, sleeping. So that's what that category really falls into. Next slide is our incidents per reporting district. Oh, before I get too far into this, neck, our starting this year, we, we've had six reporting districts up until this year. Because our runs continue to grow, I want to try to pinpoint more where those runs are occurring at. So each one of these districts are broken down into five or six additional sub-reporting districts, and we can try to pinpoint where our runs are current. Is it following the development, or is there some type of special issue going on in an area that we can pinpoint? But if you look, the top three areas are starting southwest portion of Vernon Township, northwest corner of Vernon Township, and then the north central, which includes our old town Fortville area right here on the west side of Madison. Northeast, if you look from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, had about a fifty-run increase. I'm assuming that's just because of the, the development down in that area. Next slide is our response times. We've been staying fairly consistent. We did go up. Our times did get a little bit longer in two thousand twenty-four. I attribute that, and there's a slide coming up of a lot of simultaneous calls, and I'll explain more about that here in just a second. And some of you know, obviously, road construction issues, both going through Fortville and McCordville. Hopefully, we'll be able to improve upon those. Where are we responding to? If you look at the top three or four categories there, it's all seventy-three percent of our calls occur in a residential neighborhood, single family, at a home or on a street or at apartments. Our apartment numbers obviously are increasing, and so are our runs responding to apartments. I have grouped in at the nursing home, because it is a residential living unit for those individuals staying there. But again, seventy, you know, over seventy percent of our calls, as we grow a community with residences, our run load is going to follow that pattern. The next slide is what I was referring to, the simultaneous calls. I don't know what it is. I can't explain it, but we get a lot of calls at the same time. We could go all day without a call, and then we get three. At the, so last year, there were three hundred and thirty times out of that eighteen hundred and seven that we were on one call and got a second before we were done with that first call. There were twenty-nine times that we were on two calls and got a third. There were five times we were on three calls and got a fourth one, and there was one time that we were on four calls and got the fifth. And I think this is what is having somewhat of an impact on our response times, because they'll be almost done with that first run, and they'll mark and service and take it instead of having a mutual aid truck come in, which is still going to be a farther response. But they may be in Fortville and have to respond to McCordville, or vice versa. They may be in McCordville and have to respond back to Fortville, so it's affecting or impacting that travel. One of our goals for next year's budget is to hire additional people to put another ambulance in service with a dedicated crew. If you look at the incidents per month, it's pretty consistent across the board. Our slowest month was December. Our busiest two months were tied at a hundred and sixty-six calls, and that was July and September. January of last year, you look, we did a hundred and forty-eight calls. January of this year, we did a hundred and eighty-one. So that's the path we're on right now. Incidents by the day of the week. Last year, Friday was our busiest day. In two thousand twenty-three, though, Sunday and Saturday, we're almost tied for our slowest days of the week, and now it's changed for two thousand twenty-four where they're in the top four. Don't, I don't know why. It's, there's not any more events going on, things like that, so it's just, we'll, we'll follow the pattern to see if we can try to identify. Incidents by hour of the day. We still do calls overnight, quite a few actually, but not near as many as we do during the day. If you look about seven o'clock, the runs take an uptick. Eight o'clock, they go way up. Rush hour in the afternoon between about four and six is our busiest time of the day, but it's not crashes. I think we, we responded to a hundred and some odd crashes last year, so that those numbers right there don't reflect car crashes. Some of it is, but not, not by far any major portion of it. And then we stay pretty busy until about eleven or twelve o'clock at night. Some accomplishments last year of our personnel. We had two people that successfully completed paramedic school, and they have their paramedic license now, adding two more to our department. We had five people that have successfully obtained their advanced EMT certification, which is a form of advanced life support. It's, it's more than what a basic EMT can do, but not as much as what a paramedic can do. But we can get them through the training and half the time do it in-house, and they can still provide that portion of a level of service. We had eleven people get advanced life certifications, advanced fire certifications, I'm sorry. One person completed his associate's degree and applied fire science. We had one individual get their side of human resource manager certification. One received their certified public manager, and then Josh Earl received fire inspector of the year from the Fire Inspectors Association. And Brian Hooton, the reserve person I was telling you about that comes in and helps, received the state fire marshal's award of merit for his years of service to the fire service in Indiana. And then last, very happy to, you know, we put the new medic in service. So now we do have two truck, two brand newer trucks. One of them has a dedicated staff on it. The other one is cross-staffed with the engine. Again, trying to hopefully hire additional people in two thousand twenty-six to staff that separately. And we are very happy that we ordered the ladder truck last year, and it will be here about a year, year and a half, June of next year, so, which will be a big help. Open to any questions you guys might have, comments, concerns, suggestions for improvement?
I think you should mention that you guys are paying for the truck and nobody else is. It's coming straight from funds that you guys have saved, right?
We've been very physically conservative with our budgeting. We've been able to put enough money aside that we are paying for the ladder truck through the territory and towns or funds with cash. We're not gonna, there's not going to be a lease on it. So there's not going to be interest being paid to it through taxpayer dollars. It's all going to be paid for with cash. The goal was is that we've got a lot of brand new equipment. I'm hoping to have ten years left here. That's going to be about the time somebody's going to have to come in and replace that apparatus. And it's going to be a challenge for them. So the, much as we can give them a positive bank account and things like that to work with, that's going to help them out going forward. So thank you for bringing that up.
Something to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a special event request for Cammy's Cause.
Hello, everyone. Jared Heiner, nine-two-five, Linda Drive. Do I have to do that every time?
Okay. All right.
Antiphone.
We're not talking about that, right? I'm here to ask the town's permission for us to put on Cammy's Cause again in two thousand and twenty-five. We would like the dates of August twenty-second and twenty-third. Again, that's the weekend before Labor Day weekend. And we'd like to do the same thing that we did last year. So with the Main Street, you know, the twenty-second being on the Friday, I think that went over very well with all the businesses. So we'd like to bring that back to Main Street without shutting it down and provide, you know, twenty-plus musicians again in the businesses and the bars. Do you guys think that Dora will be in effect by that point? Okay, awesome. So that helps us out a lot on the Friday night stuff. Saturday would be the same thing, the twenty-third over in the park, like we do with the big stage. I do know and I saw through communication, even though Dora is approved, we still have to go through the permitting for anybody that's at the park selling alcohol or doing anything like that. That is outside of the, so we'll be on top of that as well. Yeah, looking to do the exact same thing. We had a fantastic year in twenty-four. It was our biggest year yet. We thank you so very much for your hospitality, just your willingness to work with us and let us kind of create what we want in the park for a day, for a weekend. And then, you know, by Monday morning, have it so that we were never there.
You guys always do a great job.
Thank you. We have a great team.
I'm glad you're doing Friday night again.
Yeah, that was neat. That was really neat.
Door too, like that's a lot, big weight off our backs, right? So people can wander freely around Main Street and be able to enjoy, hop into places, out of places.
I almost feel like Main Street should almost be shut down for just that Friday night event because crowds were spilling into the street. It was really cool. I mean, nobody was going to get.
I am willing, yeah.
But it was so cool to see the crowds kind of spill out, you know, to listen to a band.
I thought that was cool, too. Some of that, obviously, being, you know, having a musician on the corner after nine o'clock doesn't really work because there's no street light right there. So it got real dark. I didn't think about that. So I'll be cleaning up a few things as far as logistics go, but I hope to have just as many businesses participate. I think they had a lot of fun with it last year. So we'll be out there knocking on doors and talking to all of them again, if approved.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yep.
Make a motion to approve special event request for Cammy's Cause two thousand and twenty-five.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, next we have another special event for Summer Fest twenty-five, Stacy Mulander.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Stacy Mulander with, I guess now we're the Fortville Business Association and we're hoping to take over Summer Fest two thousand and twenty-five. So I have submitted the special event request, but we have tried to turn this around in two weeks, so I'm sure you guys have questions.
I just want to make sure that Mark's approved and Patrick, make sure you get your.
I've been communicating with Patrick and Andrea's left a couple of messages with Mark, yeah.
I think he said you guys were going to get together and talk about the.
So. Okay. One message.
Yeah.
I think we did Tuesday.
Maybe, maybe you can include Mark on that, maybe if he'd like to be there.
Get it all.
Yeah, 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 sounds good.
Anything else we can answer?
So are you doing, are you doing everything on Main Street or is it going to be in the same location as before?
So it's a split, the day events where we have the vendors and the shopping and everything happening on Main Street from ten to five. And then at five o'clock, those vendors will close up. So Main Street can be reopened by six o'clock for any dinner traffic. And everything else will move to the park for the evening for the fireworks. So the park will start up at four o'clock. So there'll be that overlap to kind of flush people off of Main Street into the park area.
Is that going to be enough time, you think? To get everybody off of Main Street?
And what are people doing between five and nine? There's stuff going on in the park?
Uh, live music, we'll move a kids zone over there and then the fireworks will happen about nine forty-five. I mean, we move a hundred and twenty-two people for the P and E festival. We have them out of there between four and five. So roads are reopening. Noblesville without a problem. I don't see us having a problem here.
So one thing that happened last year was there were too many vendors and not enough parking. So is there going to be like designated parking spaces or recommendations for?
That's what we want to look at with the maps. So we've been, Keith has given us a couple of maps that we've kind of looked at and then we're trying to make sure logistically everybody can fit. And talking with Natalie a little bit, like on the maximum number of vendors, because that's the biggest thing. We want people to have parking. We don't want to eat up the parking lot for vendors and events. We want people to be able to come to town and park and not have an issue. So we're working on the logistics and we'll cap the number of vendors to make sure we have accessibility for everybody.
Yeah, I was talking to someone at the VFW last week and he, the Legion and the VFW seemed to be a little, I don't want to put words in their mouth. It seemed like he said that they were not happy that that parking lot was closed. I don't know if that seems like anybody else has heard that. I'm looking at Heath, but thought that maybe that smaller parking lot, well, this is more Winter Fest, I think. Yeah, but Winter Fest, never mind.
Yeah, we know.
Never mind.
And as a business on Pearl Street, we noticed the problem last year was all the vendors were parking on Main Street and then our customers couldn't get to Main Street. So we don't want that problem.
Yeah.
Because to me, closing down Main Street and having an event is defeating the purpose if I'm doing less money than I did the weekend before. So we want to make sure logistically it works out and people can come to town and we can also have business.
Yeah. So you're looking to do a music crawl, kind of like what Cammy's does?
Hoping that like the businesses, the restaurants will kind of participate during the day to have some music going on as well at the businesses, but the main music we're going to sponsor is going to be at Landmark Park. So if they choose to have music, we're just going to add them to as places to stop along the way, but nothing that's going to close the street down or anything like that.
Did you guys talk about parade at all?
Not for Summer Fest, the only parade they told me about was Winter Fest.
We used to do a, what, bike decorating parade or something like that? Isn't that what they used to do back in the olden days?
I think, yeah, well, it was.
Three-year-old and Gwen wanted to go ride a bike on Main Street.
Their mom and dad were running next to them.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just think that would be miserable in the heat.
It was miserable in the heat. I can remember specifically, I had my, our biggest Saint Bernard in a parade that day and he was so hot. It was so miserable. I'll never forget it. Yeah, it was.
Keep people moving around and doing things and going into the businesses to cool off and shop and going back out to the. And then at five o'clock, get your stuff wrapped up and head over to the park and enjoy the park. So like we can close our doors and go over there and actually enjoy the day and not just be working an event.
And you'll have a map?
And we'll have a map.
That's exciting.
Yeah. We are, we've talked about the things that you guys have covered in the past, which was like electricity and safety and security and barricades. So hoping you guys can still take care of the barricades and doing the road closures.
I think they just lay out the signs and then your group.
Yeah. Move them.
The street department will lay out the signs on the corners you want them at. And then prior to your event, you go set them up. And then when it's time to open everything up, you go back and reopen them and set them back on the side of the road.
Side of the road, okay.
Yeah.
That's easier now.
That way, you set the time when it starts, you set the time when the roads reopen. And then from there, everything is there just to, yeah.
Okay. And then electricity, can we have any partnership from the town on electricity? We're going limited electricity. I don't want every vendor. I want very limited. We think Kid Zone might be an inflatable, like slide area, one of the blow up things that we might need power for. And then we need power to the stage, but other than that, we're not going to offer the vendors electricity. Have a generator, battery operated stuff. Every other festival does it, or they have to pay for their own electricity. So we just need, I know you have one spider box.
Yeah. That's the reason why we're going to start all the power outlets and RV panels and stuff along Broadway's for these events. So we can help provide power for that.
You already know how it works, so it makes it a little bit easier.
Hand you your hand up or you just.
Just at the park, yeah, where you and I discussed, where you already have been currently providing power.
Is the nineteenth the same day that you already reserved for the fireworks?
The eleventh and twelfth.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that, but I can see other people having problems with it. People that don't like to have the fireworks anyway, you know, I can see a lot, but it's, I don't think there's a problem.
Yeah, we're talking to the restaurants. They have a lot of employees that call off to go to the Dave concert. We're going to lose a lot of our target market.
I understand that. Yeah, I understand that. So we'll continue to sponsor the fireworks, right? Okay. Just want to make sure we cover that.
Oh, is it from Stat Street down to Pearl? Is that part of Main Street that you're talking about?
Stat Street down to which one?
Stat down to Pearl. Is that where we usually go?
Yeah.
Well, you're not nodding your head or anything. I was waiting for a response.
Yeah. You go to. Yeah, I did submit a map to him.
Well, no, actually it's going straight.
Stat Street.
No, 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 Stat is closed or Stat is open, right?
Stat would be closed because we want to make sure that traffic can flow from Main Street over to Stat to the park without any problem.
Are you going to have vendors on Stat Street?
As of right now, we're not sure. We're iffy on that, but we'll have that determination in the next week or two.
So Stat closed at Main?
Yeah.
So, okay.
But we know that Mazzy's has to access the alley. Heath told us that for delivery in the evening, so we know that needs to be moved. So they'll be able to get in and out. So we just kind of wanted to keep that corner closed so we can transition faster to the park, Main Street.
You said closing Stat Street, is that actually closing Stat Street or you're closing Main at Stat?
Main and Stat.
Closing both ways.
Yeah.
Intersection.
Yeah.
Just from Main to Noel, just Main to Noel.
On that, and that intersection will be closed.
Which if we close Main and Stat, that intersection's still technically closed. I guess they can't turn up Main.
You don't have any issues with, you see vehicles or?
There's a question. We'll drive through anything.
Thank you. I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. As long as we have a main, like we can take Michigan or Broadway across a way of main corridor that we can travel.
You can work it out with them. I think you're good.
Yeah, that's.
As long as they know and them to approve, then we'll be fine with that, yeah. Okay. That's it for me.
To approve the special event request for Summer Fest two thousand and twenty-five.
A second. Favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have a public hearing on ordinance two thousand and twenty-four, one A, a voluntary annexation of one nine-two-seven West State Road two thirty-four, the Mount Vernon Schools Performance Enhancement Center. And Adam's not here to present. Are you going to be the lucky one to present? No? Okay.
Actually, there's not. This evening, the ordinance was passed the first reading back in January. We can just open up the public hearing tonight because it was advertised so that the public does have an opportunity to speak. And then we can bring this back at the next council meeting for the second reading.
Yep. One other clarification is that you will also have a resolution to adopt the fiscal plan at the next meeting. You'll adopt that and then have the second reading. It's just the procedure, the steps required by law.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to recess?
I'll make a motion to recess the council meeting and open the public hearing.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the.
The public wanting to speak about the annexation.
So this is the first reading on, this is the second.
We've already had the first.
This is neither.
This is neither.
Yeah, this is the public.
Okay, okay.
Second reading will come after. We'll play the band at the next one.
Okay.
For the public and I suppose for the council too, that if you haven't seen some of these, the hundred percent voluntary annexations are really straightforward. Really, the only thing to object would be a neighboring property owner that said that the property wasn't contiguous. It wasn't touching the existing town boundaries. That's not an issue here. So in, it doesn't, for the council's consideration, as part of that fiscal plan, you'll want to evaluate whether bringing this property in would create a hardship for the town. Doesn't look like it will, but you'll consider that on the fiscal plan. So as Ryan said, I mean, this is just to see if anyone wants to weigh in. And it doesn't look like we have anybody out there.
Okay.
Am I going to close it then?
I would say yes.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I don't need to sign any of this, right? Okay. And next up on old business, we have the second reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-four or two thousand and twenty-five dash two A, admitting the town sewer user, sewer use ordinance. Joe?
Yes, I can take this up. Obviously, we had first reading in the last meeting. And as I explained, it was just kind of going through the original ordinance that we had, cleaning up some legal details as far as maybe redundant verbiage and IC codes that may have been included that don't exist anymore and maybe never did. And then also there's some IC codes that were included, but the engineer recommended that we take some more of the verbiage out of the IC code and add to the document. And as you can see. And as you can see, Alex did put together a nice red line version, if you want to look through it and. See all the changes that are all right there. They're pretty much just all housekeeping stuff.
If I could add, I did find in one minor change or addition under section eight. And this was my doing. It says Title Five, Chapter fifty-two, Section fifty-two point zero nine seven. I'd like to add a, a parenz, capital B, closed parenz, which you can see below, that's the section that was amended. Just to make it clear for the company that codifies the ordinance, if you adopt this, that we're only changing that subsection B. And, and I'll send Missy and Adriana a revised page three if you adopt it.
So Alex, did you already make that correction in the red line version?
I did.
I thought I saw her.
Yeah. Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve second ruling of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two A, amending the town sewer use ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I need a signature, right?
Yes.
Okay, next up we have Joe for town.
Okay, uh, just a few items here I've got to go through pretty quick. We're kind of rolling on from I D M, as far as the uh, the appearance of the water, you know, the quality that. Has been questioned as far as the rust and stuff that's in the water. Uh, the engineers have been working on some uh, test, uh, bench top test with the filter aid. And it appears to be doing a really good job and we're very optimistic that that's going to get us where we need to be. Um, before we can set up the apparatus to start feeding the filters and make it function. Uh, we have to get approval from I D M, so we're currently waiting for I D M's approval. And if they uh, give us the approval, we install that, it takes care of it, then uh, we'll be looking to. Move forward with a more permanent setup. As far as the road paving, uh, I've been working with the contractor that was selected, got the contract, it's all signed up. And everything's ready to go, got their certificates and insurance and all, uh, waiting on the P O from N dot. So as soon as we get the P O, we can uh, give them notice to proceed and uh. I think they're kind of anxious to get started on some of those repairs on the curbs and sidewalks and stuff a little early, so excited about that. The project out here along Broadway that uh, the N P O came and spoke to the council with a few meetings back. Um, council, you know, selected to move forward with this project. The N P O has put together a, a large, quite a large scope of work to be done. Um, that we're going to be looking to put in what they call the P E, the preliminary engineering for the design work of that project. They have um, gone ahead and given us a, an award. It's not the full amount of the award that it's going to take. But it's funding that they've got available. They want to go and give us before they end up losing it. Um, and our match is a ten percent, uh, it's a ninety-ten split. And it's a forty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and this won't be something that comes up all at once. So payments will go out as the project progresses and it'll probably be. Two to three years before we get to the end of the preliminary engineering. Uh, the utility coordination is part of that as well, and that part will continue till the end of the project. It could be ten years before this project's built, so um, I would look uh, for the council to uh, approve. Or accept these awards that uh, the N P O has given us. And we can move forward and sign all the paperwork on that.
Sounds good.
Do you need a motion now?
Uh, you'd probably be better.
Motion to approve the.
Awards.
The awards from the N P O.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the rewards from the N P O for the trail project. That what it is?
My second.
I'm sorry, I can't hear very well.
What was the project?
At the last uh, it was two, two meetings ago, right?
Yes, yes, it's been a few meetings, but, and I will say too, in this um, scope of work, he's also included. Uh, you know, we were looking to do the South Madison Boulevard with um, Loth. Uh, they backed out, but we're still looking to, to do that project at some point as soon as we get the right developer ready to go. Part of the uh, process for connecting onto N dot right there at the highway. Uh, there needs to be some traffic studies with the lighting and safety and there's. Probably a year, year and a half's worth of process to get through before that can even happen. This will actually get all that done. It'll be canned and ready to go. So as that development starts.
Okay.
We can have that done.
Oh, I was wondering, can we get that like earlier than like tonight to look over?
I asked him to do it tonight because uh, the very same thing. I don't like uh, having things last minute. Um, the other question that he wanted me to ask council, um, he's got until May to obligate these funds. Or we'll lose them because they closed down, N dot closes down in June. And if the funds aren't obligated before the end of their shutdown, then those funds are lost. Um, with all the process going back and forth, we'll have to go out for the uh, R F Ps, which we've got that paperwork. Put together a request for proposals, um, willing to give an N dot for uh, the D B E goes, the. Disadvantaged Business Enterprise, that's what they call it. So we have to have that on the R F P when we send it back to him, by N dot does the advertising for us. And then we have to get those in, score them, select, and there's a lot of back and forth. And um, Dave's concern was if we have to come back to council every time for approval to get this process done. We will not make that deadline, or we're going to have to have a lot of special meetings.
You know, I, no, I don't mind uh, the deadline or anything like that, just like to look it over.
Yeah.
Before.
But that being of, you know, the, my next question is, is the council comfortable with me processing all that? So we can meet that deadline.
Good with it. Fritz, we, we looked at this.
Yeah.
We did.
We did.
We had extensive conversations about this.
He was here.
He was here.
I don't think you were here that night. I think that was the night you weren't here.
He asked him to come.
You know, if we're going to discuss something in a meeting, I'd like to have it in front of me before the meeting, if that's possible.
Yeah, I was getting things, I know you guys like to get your reference material stuff for the agenda. And I'd like to get it out to you as quick as possible, but depending on others to get us information, it's.
We already giving the approval that we wanted it, right?
Correct, yeah, that's the reason why they, you know, they've already started the project.
I just would, they just have sent it off for us. Before the meeting, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'll still make the motion to approve the awards for, for the N P O for the trail project.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And allow me to move forward with all the signing of Dr. Linsen getting it all done.
Okay.
Yep.
What else did I have this evening? You know what? I think that's pretty much it for me.
Adam is not here. Where is Adam? Adam's sick?
He's on vacation.
Oh, he's on vacation. Well, good for him. Heath? Probably somewhere where it's warm.
Who's the parks manager for the record? Um, the only thing that I have tonight is. The conversation we had previously, I was looking into some consulting firms working on our master parks plan. Um, I finally was able to get some numbers back, so I'm looking for approval from you guys to move forward. I've got it in my budget. Um, but it is just barely over my and Joe's spending limit without your approval. Um, what we'll be looking at doing uh, is. And I think I threw this in an email, but we'll be doing a kickoff meeting and project coordination with a site tour. Um, we're going to run another online survey, uh, day of focus groups, uh, public meeting. They're going to provide us with some demographic and recreation trends analysis, um, some funding strategies, implementation of the plan. Um, and then final master plan production. And the reason why we need to really have this done. Um, is whether or not we move forward with Parks Board or you guys continue to be kind of the Parks Authority. Any, anything that we were to ever put in place in the future, whether that's park impact fees or some kind of tax. You know, food tax, you know, within, within the town, something that, you know, to help uh, garner that revenue from the parks. We are going to have to have an approved master plan put in place while it is finished. Um, again, I'm not a consultant, um, and I would prefer to have a, a professional company come in and be able to do this, so. Uh, with that being said, the total of that was thirteen thousand two hundred dollars to be able to have uh, that initial um, scope of work done. Uh, the other quote that I got was for fifty-one thousand for the scope.
It's fifty-one thousand for the second quote.
Yeah.
And the one was the thirteen.
Thirteen, yeah.
What co- what companies were?
Prose Consulting, so Prose Consulting uh, specializes in this. Um, Context actually. Uh, recommended these guys, the, they're the ones that kind of handle the type of work that we're working for. Um, right now, I know they've done penalties, they've done quite a few local communities around here. And they really catered it to kind of our, our size of town. Um, so that's really where, where we're at with that Parks Plan. Obviously, within the Parks Plan that I did, we have the survey in there, but that survey at this point in time is almost six years old. Um, and so we need to get a, a better idea of what the community wants. At the end of the day. What needs to be put in that park plan, in my opinion, is what the community wants. If it is moving forward with something in Landmark Park, great. This plan will help us figure out which direction that needs to go and how we're going to get there. Um, the last thing that I want, I've told Joe this, is, is getting something approved by you guys that sits. In a filing cabinet for five years and have to redo it, or we need to have a plan in place. Not saying that everything's going to get accomplished, not saying that, you know, all the wants on there are, are something that we can do, but have a plan in place. That allows us to strategize to actually make that stuff happen versus, you know, hey, it looks good on paper, but. You know, what are we going to do about it? So that's kind of the goal as it sits uh, with this. So I would ask you guys just kind of that approval for me to move forward within my budget to be able to, to make this happen and. And if so, then I'll, I'll get started on it right away.
No, it, it sounds great. Just, I'd like a little bit more notice before um, like, you know, to die, maybe. Send us, shoot us an email um, during the week that, hey, you're going to bring us requests like for thirteen thousand dollars. So at least I would, you know.
Yeah, I can do that. I mean, I, the last council meeting, I, I, we had a conversation about, you know, I was getting these quotes, so.
Right.
Um, I frankly, I was waiting on a third one and they just ghosted me, so um, at this point in time, I've got those two.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the consulting. Next master plan. Of thirteen thousand.
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
My second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
There you go, Heath.
That's all I have. And if there's got any more questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anxious to see what they say. Patrick?
All right, um, the K nine truck that was in the accident has, but that was totaled. Has been re. Uh, purposed and back in service now. So we had to drive to Pittsburgh to get a new truck. Um, picked one up off a lot there because they're very rare to come across. It's all been, everything's done to the new one except the decals and that's scheduled for this next week. So just want to give you an update on that. Um, the last two years, or last year's two vehicles that we were waiting for, that I asked for approval. For the money to be rolled over into this year, we picked up this past week. So that money is from last year for last year's are done. And now we'll be waiting on this year's vehicles whenever they come in from Ford. Um, so that's just an update on cars. Everything else, only other request that I have, which I'll send out later down the road, I just kind of want to give you guys a heads up. It's not really a request tonight, but I'd like to attend the uh, International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference this year. Um, it's in Denver, October seventeenth through the twenty-second, but I will get you some information. That'll come out of my training budget. It's just allowing me to go be gone for about a week to go do some additional training, so. So anything I really have is, that's on the books then in mine unless you have something for me.
What was um, the street like getting knocked down at Merrill Street? What happened there? I was.
With a truck driver.
Yeah.
Truck driver just touched the corner.
A swift truck, yeah. Swift truck driver took the corner too sharp and knocked it down.
Okay. Is that, is that going to be a reoccurring problem, you think, Joe? Do they need to maybe move it?
Actually, actually, the truck drivers could be figuring out how to drive properly.
Right.
And not be going down city streets.
Agree, but is it going to be a? Because it seems like that's the Bermuda Triangle of Fort Mill. Broadway.
We've actually had.
Been here twenty years and I've never had a car accident there. I, I feel like I've been left out.
We're not going to live for two hours. Yeah, I, I believe that driver got a written um, notice that he should probably follow the proper rules.
I would like to think so. Get that, that's really bad.
That project is still under the uh, N dot, so we're in the process of placing that out and getting it repaired and. Needs to go after the truck driver and insurance for reimbursement.
I know it's truck drivers' fault, but they get stuck along there at Cynthia Road on the railroad tracks and I don't know how many signs you put up there.
And that's the truck driver's fault too.
Yeah, truck tires' fault, yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Thank you.
Adriana, you got anything?
Anyone has any questions for me?
Do not. Alex?
Same here, unless you have questions for me, I don't have anything for you.
No.
Public comment? No, okay. Counsel comments? Libby? I've got none. I had something that left me, so I have nothing.
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. And we need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
A motion to approve and sign vouchers.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I will make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-five.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.